Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting, June 12th, 2024. Let's see, approval of the agenda? Any changes?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those who approve of the agenda, please, or actually Sarah Raymond, your vote, and Gary Howard.
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes, so we have approved the agenda. Is there any public comment regarding closed session items? No? Okay, we are going to now recess to closed session. Valley School District. Okay, we are about to open the Castro Valley Unified School District School Board Session here for June 12th. Welcome. And if people could not be in the doorways just for fire and safety concerns, if you could move away from doorways, you could go elsewhere, forward, backward, all of that's okay. Thank you. Alrighty. We have a report on an action taken in closed session. We have, the board took action to approve the appointment of Mr. Stephen Hendy as Canyon Middle School Principal with a vote of five to zero, trustee Michael Kuziak with the first motion, and trustee Sarah Raymond with the second motion. So, welcome to Stephen Hardy as our principal of Canyon Middle. I'd like to also say, you probably have noticed this, noticed this, that Michael Kuziak is online here with us due to emergency circumstances. We are now going to take a look, we have our our mission statement by trustee Whitaker.
Thank you. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give you now the public comment instructions. And here it goes. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak blue form on the back table or via Google form, www.cv.k12 california.us backslash public comment backslash, and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted or asked to stop speaking. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to more, no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. I would also like to ask everybody here to respect one another and act with good civil discourse with each other, please. We are now going to have a presentation about the Canyon Middle School Athletic Fields Project Update. And I'm opening the, this section.
So this is a public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sharon Truquince, our director of facilities, to start us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amati, and good evening, board. Good evening, all of our community members that have come out. And just wanted to start us off with our project, the Canyon Middle School Athletic Fields. I wanted to take us back to 2016 where the hard board and our school district had passed voters a ballot measure for our bots to renovate our facilities. And since then, we have worked with the community in terms of bringing this project into fruition. And I wanted to highlight some key dates of approvals that have, and community meetings that we have had. So back in 2017, we started the planning for the project. In May of 2017, we had a community forum highlighting the conceptual design for both our middle school athletic fields. And in June of 2019, we in, well, going, in October of 2017, we had a special joint board meeting to discuss the project and approve of staff working on the joint use agreements and moving forward with developing budgets and designs and, you know, the joint use agreements for this project. In June of 2019, we had finished the master facilities use agreement across all of our district sites. And then in 2022, we walked on specifically for the Canyon Middle School design and construction and really meticulously went over all the different items that we were going to be agreeing on for our joint use and the funds and the improvements that would happen. And so it leads us to today where we're doing our, our CEQA portion of it. Continue our public hearing, our public engagement. And we started with the report that was first circulated back in December and approved. And we heard some comments, and so now we're bringing it back for recirculation. And this is our public hearing, and we have two presentations for you. And we have Dwayne Mears from Placeworks, who is our CEQA consultant. They'll tell you about our kind of CEQA process, and then we have someone from our lighting engineer that will also speak too. So let me bring Dwayne Mears up.
Thank you, Sharon. Good evening. Again, my name is Dwayne Mears. I'm the principal of Placeworks. We've been doing environmental studies for 45 years or so. And I think we've done more field projects across California than anyone else. So we bring a lot of experience to the project. Let me go over CEQA again, and a lot of this is repeat from the last presentation. But CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, it's our primary environmental protection law. It requires public agencies to take consideration of the possible environmental effects of any action that they take. And so this is a physical project, there are possible impacts, and therefore you have to evaluate and consider the environmental effects of the project before you complete it or before you approve the project. So the district has completed a draft, re-circulated the initial study, mitigated negative declaration. I'm sorry, that's a lot of words there for the athletic field. So what is a mitigated negative declaration? Let me start by first talking about the negative declaration. What does that mean? Well, that's pretty simple. It just means that we don't have any significant effects from the project. Now, we add, in this particular case, we add the word mitigated because we do have some mitigation measures that we have identified. So in other words, we have some, some issues that we could have an impact, and so we add mitigation measures for that. It's an informational document. It's intended to be objective. It doesn't take sides. It's just basically presenting you with information for, to improve your decision making. And it also is to inform the public and any other agencies that might be interested. And you must approve this document before you take action on any particular project. So you will need to believe that it adequately addresses the impacts of the project, approve it, and then you can consider approving the project itself at the last, at the next hearing. So here's some information. I know some of this is difficult to see on the projection, but here's the location. I think everybody knows that it's on the middle school site. And you see two aerials. One is in detail on the right. So you have the campus, well, the entire property in red. In orange, you see the field that's, that we're talking about. So you now have a grass field. The project is to replace that with a synthetic turf. We have the access points. We're concerned about how you get to in and out of the field. And so we have identified those access points on this particular graphic. Everyone's interested in the lighting, and so what we show here are the locations of the lights. And they, they vary in height from 60 to 90 feet. And what's happening, and you'll hear a lot more detail in the next presentation from Musco. But basically, we're providing, or the project will provide an average of 30-foot candles across the field for soccer. That's one level of lighting that you need for that kind of a sport. And then for the infield, because you've got a baseball that moves quickly, you need a much brighter light for that, to play that safely. And so you have a 50-foot candle average across the infield of the, of the baseball fields. But anyway, the different colors show the different lights, the different heights for the lights. So what do we address in the environmental document? The mitigated negative declaration is based on an initial study, and that's all in the materials that are before you today. And that initial study covers all of these different projects, basically from aesthetics to wildfire. Basically, the A to Z of environmental impacts. So these are the broad categories, but also each one of these also has subcategories that we look at. So basically, it really makes sure that we understand and review all potential impacts. Now, in a project like this, a field lighting project, the issues that are most important are lighting, that people are concerned about, noise, traffic, air quality, maybe to a lesser extent. Those are the ones that we have really focused on, so we have, we've really dealt with those. And CEQA is intended to do that. In other words, don't, don't spend a lot of time on issues that you can dismiss very easily. Focus on those that, that really have a potential impact. So we completed a number of technical studies, and you'll see that throughout the document and in also the, in the attachments and appendices, photographic simulations and light trespass. And you'll hear a lot more about that in the next presentation. Air quality, we did a health risk assessment, we, geotechnical investigation. Obviously, noise and vibration, technical analysis is very important, and you'll see that. We did a traffic study, and that is appended to the document as well. So we encourage you to take a look at all of those documents. So what are the results? So one thing I mentioned is that we don't have any significant impacts. And in most of the, the categories that I, that you saw on that one slide, we didn't have any significant impacts, no real concern. There were a few that we identified that, well, let's, let's include mitigation to make sure that we're below a level of significance. In terms of air quality, we're doing, we're disturbing the ground, you know, there's some grading that needs to be done. And so you always want to be concerned about dust generation. And so that's, we have a very standard mitigation measure in there to control dust. And in terms of biological resources, well, we want to make sure that any migration of wildlife and bird disturbance is taken care of. So again, we have what I would call a very standard mitigation measure that, that you'll see in many different documents. Cultural resources and paleontological resources. Again, same kind of thing, we're disturbing the ground. We don't have any reason to think that there's anything there. But why not be cautious and conservative and, and take the time? If, if there is something that you've found, some kind of resources, let's investigate it. Stop the grading at that point, investigate it, retrieve the resource, and then you can move on with the project. Noise, I think there's some confusion about this. We basically look, when we do the noise analysis, we look at, at the activities that are proposed and the hours of day when they are going to occur. And, and we look at the distance between the field and the nearest homes. We look at the topography, all those kinds of things are in the analysis. Our conclusion is that based on that, the site is, works pretty well, and we do not have a significant impact in terms of noise. Now, what, the reason we included something called a good neighbor policy is that we want to make sure that, that the, the field isn't somehow used inappropriately. For example, to bring an air horn on. Kids, you know, kids might get boisterous and bring on things that they shouldn't, blast music, those kind of things. So those are things that, that are inappropriate at the site and should not be used. So that's the reason why we talk about a good neighbor policy. Tribal cultural resources, same thing. We might, we might, we're going to disturb the ground, and therefore we should make sure that we are recovering any resource that might be there. So the CEQA process, next steps. So this is obviously an opportunity for the public to make comments, and you're going to hear that tonight. This is not a requirement of CEQA. This is in addition. The couple of hearings that we've had, a meeting that we've had are in addition to what's really required under CEQA. So you really taken the, really giving people the opportunity to review and comment on the document. So the, the public review period is ending, and so what we are going to do is gather all of the comments received and then prepare responses to those. Everything that deals with a physical environmental effect, or maybe they, somebody challenges us and says, you know, you've got this wrong. We will take a look at that and objectively and provide a response. Then June 26th is the scheduled date for your consideration of, again, approving the CEQA document, approving the mitigation monitoring program, and, and once that's done, possibly approving the project. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Anthony, Dwayne. And so for our next presentation, I'd like to call Daniel Lohman from Musco Lighting. He is our lighting engineer and our expert to talk to you more about the lighting. Eric.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Lohman. I am the engineering manager for our West Sales Region, Musco Sports Lighting. Been with the company for about 10 years now. And tonight, I'm going to speak with you a little bit about our technology, how we apply it, the standards that we follow, and some things more specific to the project here at Canyon Middle School. One quick note on the cover sheet here, this is at a school down in the Phoenix area where another manufacturer installed LED product. And the neighbors had quite a few complaints about that, so they asked us to come in and replace those lights, and it provided a great solution for that community. So one thing that we have been passionate about for the almost 50 years that we've been in business is making lighting better. And one of those ways that we have done that is made sure that we are putting light where we want to, which is on the sports field and not where we don't want to, which would be spill over into the surrounding areas. So starting on the left-hand side up there, that was the first product that we started working with back in the 1970s. And then kind of went through several iterations of metal halide technology up through the mid 2000s. The bright red arrow there is pointing to the LED solution that we would be proposing to put up at Canyon Middle School. One thing I'd like to note is just to the left of that is the last generation of our HID product, which is at the high school here as well. So, and then on the very right is our competitor's LED fixture, just for kind of a comparison for how we're going about using the technology versus how others are. So this is what our fixture looks like. We have a few different wattages, but they all have this same form factor, this wedge shape, if you will. It's all assembled at our factory in Muscatine, Iowa. And what I want to talk about specifically is the visor and why that piece is so important. You'll notice that it is very focused on making sure that the light goes forward and down. You know, we have some reflectors on the inside to make sure that there's minimal spill, either right or left. We want to make sure that we're focusing that beam of light to where we want it to go, being the sports field. One thing that does come as a result of this is we have very little light up in the air. The downward cutoff of that is so stark, sometimes once you get a ball 30 to 40 feet in the air, you will completely lose sight of that. So to kind of mitigate that, what we've done is we do have several teams within our research and development department at Musco who work on different facets of the fixture. We have one team that works on the heat sink, one that works on the optics, so on and so forth. As I mentioned, the visor is designed for specifically forward and downward throw, and it also drastically reduces off-site spill. As I mentioned, we do have some issues with vertical light. So what we developed was what we refer to as our ball tracking fixture. It is a fixture that is mounted lower on the pole and faces up, which generally would be thought of as a bad thing. So our research and development team specifically developed an optic package, a fixture, an visor that's of the same shape as our pole top fixture to make sure that we are putting a controlled amount of light up into the air to ensure player safety and also to minimize off-site impact. So here's some examples of the technology as it's been applied to some sports fields here in California. This is at Healdsburg High School in Healdsburg, California. The poles here are 70 feet tall. There are four of them across each side of the field. And one thing I do want to kind of point out here is just how little, well, there's pretty much no light that goes above the tops of the poles in this case. The next example we have is at Patrick Henry High School down in San Diego. These poles are 80 feet tall, and they're on a plus 20-foot elevation relative to the field. And again, you can see there's a very drastic cutoff for this field with the way we're able to aim it. And last but not least, this is the softball field at Concordia University in Irvine, California. And the reason why I wanted to show this field specifically is because it is an NCAA lit field, meaning it's lit to higher levels than your standard recreational field, and we're still able to achieve the same level of cutoff. So how do we go about doing that? Well, we have a dedicated engineering department broken down by our sales regions. As I mentioned, I head up our West Engineering Group. We have to make different considerations for different sports. You know, baseball, the ball is much smaller than a football or a soccer ball, so you can't light those two sports the same. So this leads to, you know, differing pole heights. As Dwayne mentioned, we have multiple different pole heights on the proposed project at Canyon Middle School. This is because there are multiple different sports that are being overlaid on top of each other across the entirety of the turf field. We design every project individually. Nothing we do is, you know, boilerplate. We, you know, speak with our sales team about the concerns and design criteria for the field on a project-by-project basis. And then we design based on those conversations that we have. We take input from, you know, our customers, the architects, and things like that. As I mentioned, the design for Canyon Middle School required the different pole heights. Is there different types of fields being overlaid on the top, on, excuse me, on top of each other for different sports? So this is an example of our output documentation that we provide. We refer to them as scans. So basically, what you're seeing here are the light levels that would be occurring on a 30 by 30 grid across one of the baseball fields. I didn't include the entire scan set in here. So what this shows are light levels on a pre-specified grid spacing. They display important metrics like the highest spot, which is the green text on that picture, lowest spot, which is the red text on that picture, average light levels, your uniformity ratio, which is the quotient of your maximum light level to your minimum light level. We'll get into why that's important in a second. And all these documents and the design work is generated using our photometric software. We don't just pick and choose what light levels we want to use at random. There is a body called the IES, or Illuminating Engineering Society, which writes recommendations for all types of lighting. We often reference their RP6, which is their recommended practices for lighting sports and recreational areas. Gives recommendations for both design criteria and field measurement criteria. So like what light levels it should be lit to based off of what sport it is, you know, how tall the pole should be, pole spacing, pole locations, and so on. And they break these requirements down by what they refer to as class of play. This ranges from class two to class, or sorry, class one to class four, with class one being the highest level of play, so like professional, high-level, division-one college athletes. And then class four being like very low-level recreational lighting. Typically, most fields fall between class two and class three. That's what we see if you're like recreational softball leagues, soccer complexes, middle schools, high schools, and so on. And that's where the fields at Canyon Middle School fall in. The baseball fields were designed to IES class three, which is 50-foot candles in the infield, 30-foot candles in the outfield. And then the soccer fields are also designed to that class three level, 30-foot candles. Spill and glare control, as I mentioned, is very important to us. We want to make sure that we're being considerate to those who are going to be around the project as well. So the same photometric software that allows us to generate the on-field light levels also allows us to look at what the impact will be to the areas surrounding the proposed fields. This can even be done at different elevations, above or below grade, the field, particularly relevant to this project. And one thing that we are, like I keep mentioning, passionate about at Musco is we, we want to try to be as environmentally conscious as possible, and we want to be good neighbors. We want to be considerate to the people that are going to be around the project as well. So this is an example of kind of a base level spill grid that we would do for a project like this. We often refer to this as a blanket grid. The metric being shown on here is horizontal light levels. There are kind of three metrics we look at, being horizontal light, vertical light, and then candela. So horizontal light, think of it as the light that you see on the carpet or any other horizontal plane in the room. Vertical light would be like light on the walls or the light that allows you to see the image on the projector or read that poster. And then candela is a little bit more abstract. It is defined as the measure of luminous intensity. Essentially, the best way to think about it is sometimes you will feel discomfort when you're staring directly at a light source. That's the impact of, you know, taking in that candela into the eye. So as you can see here, hopefully, person pronounced, the text is very small, but the light does taper off very quickly around the field. This particular scan is at the same grade as the field. And, you know, there's not much else I can really say about it, but we're doing what we want to achieve here. We're keeping the lights to the field. But as I mentioned, we can take a look at some places that do have elevations. So we took a look at a couple of different areas around the field. So this is showing neighborhood for Crown Court, this being the horizontal spill, the vertical spill, and then the max candela. The horizontal and vertical spill both came in at zero. And then the max candela had a max value of like 400 something, which is roughly comparable to an incandescent light bulb in terms of intensity. We then have Green Ridge Road. Same result with the horizontal and vertical, still showed zeros. And then the max candela was a little bit higher. It was a little bit closer to 1,000. And then the last area we considered was a combination of Green Ridge and Highwood. And again, with the horizontal and vertical, same result, zero. Uh, and again, with the horizontal and vertical, same result, um, zeros there. And then the candela was less than about five thousand, which is roughly the same visual impact as like an LED porch light or a street light somewhere in that region. So one thing I do want to note about these as well is these don't, uh, these assume a direct line of sight from the light source to the grid point. So this doesn't take into account any blockages from trees or houses that are in between other houses in the field, uh, or any of that. This assumes like an absolute worst case direct line of sight scenario. So, um, you know, it's, it's really a pretty conservative measurement of what we would think the impact might be. Um, so looking at this, we reviewed the impact at three different areas, the potential impacts at three different areas. We accounted for the elevation of each different area relative to the field as well. Uh, and the outcome is that we expect very minimal impact from both a spill and glare standpoint. Um, one of the last things I want to talk about the product is the controls. So our standard control system allows for automatic scheduling. So if there's a hard curfew of say nine or nine thirty PM, you can set that schedule with our call center. You shut the lights off at nine thirty PM. Um, that can also be done through an app that's available on Android or iPhone. Um, you just have to be given user credentials to be able to access it. And the lights can also be turned on and off remotely at any time by either calling into the call center or using the same app. Um, it also comes with three standard dimming levels that can be customized through our call center. Uh, that basically makes it so the lights are only as bright as they need to be when they are needed to be that bright. So. Um, just wanted to share some similar projects that we've done around the area in recent years. Um, Shoreline Middle School in Santa Cruz, Agnew's Middle School in San Jose. We also did the adjacent high school there as well. Hillsdale Middle School in El Cajon, Holtville Middle School in Holtville, Farland Junior High in McFarland, California, and George H. Flamson Middle School in Paso Robles. Uh, so in conclusion, we have really honed in our technology to be optimized for both on and off-field performance. Um, we take a look at every project individually to make sure it gets the time and care that it needs. Um, we have experience of lighting all different fields at all different levels, you know, everything from little league to professional stadiums. Um, and we are expecting very minimal offsite impact as a result of the proposed lighting system at Canyon Middle School. Uh, and last but not least, we do stay committed as a company to the project after the install. We pride ourselves on building relationships and making sure that everybody stays satisfied with the system throughout its lifetime. Uh, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we don't take questions for presenters.
Daniel Loma.
It's all in the board packet.
So yeah, so that concludes our presentation. So now we can start the, um, public comment portion. Um, we got to you, Amy.
Sure. So, um, I first have a, uh, list on a piece of paper of people who signed up to speak first. I'm going to go through that list. Uh, then there's, um, at least one person online, maybe now more. And then I have the, uh, blue cards that people filled out. Okay, uh, each person will have, uh, three minutes and please respect the time.
Do you, I'm sorry, do you also just want to also clarify that because this is a public hearing, we will not be limiting this to thirty minutes.
Right. It will not be, everybody will get to speak the thirty minutes. Uh, everybody will get to speak three minutes. We will not be, uh, yeah, please don't speak thirty minutes. Right. I'm going to stop you at three minutes. Okay, so, um, our first public comment is from, uh, Mike. Oh, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce anybody's name, Mike Dunham. Mike Dunham.
Fair statement, I'll just read it easier. First I wanted to say, um. Mike D needs a mic check. Um, well, first of all, I just want to, I first, I want to applaud the collaborative effort between the school board and HARD. I think that's a hard thing to do, no pun intended. Um, so it's kind of a genius move to collaborate as you did. So kudos for that. Um, and I'm also very much in favor of investment in community infrastructure. Uh, that said, I cannot, um, support this project as it's designed because I think it leaves a lot of unanswered questions for the community. And I'll share a quick anecdote to explain my case. I run most mornings and I usually run down Green Ridge down, uh, Crow Canyon Road into town. And typically what I have to do is weave through on school days dozens of cars that are double parked on red curbs, cars that are blocking the intersection, cars that are blocking the crosswalk, cars that are often blocking the, uh, entrance to the fire station. So if I get through that congestion, I wind up in front of a memorial to a young girl who was killed, who should be in high school. Uh, but the driver prioritized his time over her safety. So what we should be doing tonight is actually talking about meaningful investments in pedestrian safety around our schools, not new investments in facilities that will add to congestion. I think the facilities are good. We should make investments in our schools, but first and foremost, we have to invest in the public safety. So I think one of the things that I would like to propose, and I've submitted this in writing as well. There are a, a series of investments, and it's good to see the design team here tonight, that you shouldn't be making first and foremost, bare minimum investments. Traffic lights a- at the entrance and exit, at all entrances and exits at Canyon. Right now there's only one. Meaningful traffic control and mitigation, real policing, crossing guards. You have to have an actual enforceable policy for traffic coming and going during events, practices, et cetera. And I think you need a little bit more transparency and accountability baked into the MOU because right now feels very much like a, uh, community sports mafia getting a little bit of a deal on the backside. And I think you need to have a little bit more, uh, upfront discussion with the neighbors. So, um, that's all for now. Again, I think this is an incredible investment you all are making. I think the amount of time that you put into, you know, collaborative approach to resource management is awesome. Uh, I just think there's a couple pedestrian safety improvements that we should be thinking about first. So thanks.
Our next speaker is Jeff Small.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Small and I live on Green Ridge Road. To all of the soccer and softball families, we stand with you. We want you to get your own fields. But HARD is using our shared gold to manipulate and mislead. When the board previously voted to approve the project, Placework's own environmental review didn't even match the posted plans. Your yes vote was based on operations till dusk and no amplified sound. Yet the project plan said something different. When neighbors pointed this out and many other discrepancies to CBUSD, we were graciously given a meeting with CBUSD. Placework suddenly came back with a new three hundred page review and HARD miraculously came up with a new design with fifteen stadium lights, ten of which were over eighty feet tall. And still with increased noise, traffic and four hundred additional people at a time, they still said no impact. That doesn't even make sense. HARD is following a trend that is happening all around the country. It works like this. An outside agency approaches a district. They dangle the promise of money via community sports, something we can all get behind. And then they promise no impact on the surrounding community with a misleading environmental review, knowing that many won't notice. We noticed. Communities in Albany and San, San Diego fell for this same promise of no impact and they're now regretting it. Once built, the neighbors watched as the promises of quote unquote no impact from a fluffy environmental review were all broken. But a community in Portland did something really cool. They fought back and stopped the project. And then they turned around and worked with the school and the sports leagues. They raised money. They built a sports complex with fields that everyone could live with. Tonight you're going to hear from speakers presenting expert evidence and studies on light and sound from our community and how Placeworks falsely claims the project has no environmental impact. Evidence that could be used. You know what I mean? Something no one wants. Let's work together. Vote no on this specific project so that we can build something together. The community, the school and the sports families. Thank you.
Michael Reiner.
You had to make me follow Jeff, right? So first I want to say I'm like most people who were for the kids getting more sports, sports facilities. That's great. We want that. Um, to let you know where I'm coming from, I'm the guy whose house is probably about most, one of the most effective houses. This is your field. My house is there. I was going to talk about reduced quality of life, affected my property values, but after hearing Daniel's very impressive report on illumination of the sporting events, I changed my mind. And off the cuff, I, just you know where I'm also coming from. I'm a mechanical engineer that specializes in projection and illumination systems for consumer electronics. And his report was great. It talked all about the illumination. There won't be any spill over. The lights are very directional. All that is true. But your math score is still fifty percent. You left off the biggest thing that's going to affect all of us, especially people with a view directly on the field, which is reflected light. When you look drive down the street at a full moon, you can drive down the street or walk around with a lot of light because the moon is reflecting it. It's not emitting light, it's reflecting light from the sun. That's what the field is going to be like. It's an artificial turf field. It's going to be glowing. When you drive by the Oakland Stadium and there's like, and you see that glow. Now imagine your house, that's in your backyard. There will be impact. The report said no significant environmental impact. That is just not true. There will be significant impact, especially to the neighbors that live directly around the field. And then that's not even to mention the noise pollution, the traffic and all the other stuff. So be very careful with this plan that you promote. There will be impact and there will be ramifications for your decisions. That's all I have to say.
I'm going to call the next three people and if you could line up so we can, you know, once the three minutes up, get to the next speaker and the next speaker. So the next three people are Susan Dioli, Cynthia, uh, Tros, uh, Sledge, sorry, and Tina Sax.
I am here to address the proposed improvements at Canyon Middle School. I am pleased the school district and HARD are coming together in a creative and purposeful way to use existing land resources. It's on this basis that having a new sports field for the kids is important. However, I would like to take this opportunity to share my concerns. Currently during the school year, I hear the daily announcements, the PE teachers leading the kids through exercise and occasionally music in the afternoons. All these are using some kind of PA system. Of course, when we moved to the neighborhood, that style of sound would be expected. I also worked at an elementary school in Saliandro for seven years, so I'm familiar with school noise. But I also knew at the end of the day, I could expect the quiet to return. I am in support of a fair and equitable approach to the improvements at Canyon Middle School. These need to benefit the kids, but also create a balance for the neighbors in the surrounding areas. Living on the side of a canyon carries a unique set of circumstances. Accurate noise and light studies for our specific location must be prepared. Canyon Middle School and the surrounding neighborhoods have been good neighbors for decades. It's with the support of the parents, the kids and the school staff that have made Canyon a successful school that future residents look towards when buying a home in our area. It's with this good neighbor ideal that I request the following. No amplified sound. If parents want to cheer for their kids, terrific. That's great. But no announcing the scores, no, who's the next batter up? Food sales announcements, music, that kind of thing, especially till ten o'clock at night. Create additional parking, create a proper drop off and pickup area that benefits both the school students and the players. Currently, some middle school students are walking down Crow Canyon and Green Ridge with parents parking in the red zones. This isn't safe during daylight hours and will become more dangerous in the evenings, especially for our younger kids. As for my part of being a good neighbor, I invite you to see for yourself what we experience at our home. Your studies and diagrams won't give you a true sense of our concerns without visiting. With regards to lights, are you aware that many of us have ten foot tall windows that look out the, towards this field? Have you taken into account the elevation of the school field in addition to the height of the light poles? If not, I encourage you again to come visit. Revisiting our, like, the lighting and the plan in the neighborhood is important. I feel in the spirit of maintaining some goodwill that this joint venture between the school district and HARD must include representative.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Your three minutes are up now and we must move to the next speaker.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent and staff and all of you amazing soccer players. One would have to be some kind of monster not to want fields for community sports. My issue is with this specific project tonight. I'd like to focus on the topic of noise. It was helpful that Placeworks, the project's environmental review company, references in their own analysis a noise assessment conducted using the plan, Sound Plan Model. Sound Plan is a software that generates how decibel levels travel from the sound source and how they radiate out. It's a reputable software and it takes into account topography among many other relevant factors. Buried in the report that was submitted later, Placeworks does not reference a single study ever being conducted on the actual canyon field project. Instead. Instead, they reference data that are considered similar to this project's. Perhaps Placeworks thought no one would notice that fact, but we noticed. Why didn't Placeworks include the study in the analysis? We were so curious that our neighborhood group hired Saxalbe Acoustics, the same company who did the very study that's referenced in the PlanWorks report. We know why Placeworks didn't include the actual study. It's because it doesn't even come close to passing muster. The decibel levels exceeded by far the Alameda County standards by as much as twenty-two decibels to the closer residents and exceeded standards for every home along the field, even homes across the street. Placeworks quoted an inaccurate decibel allowance. Alameda County does not allow fifty decibels. The decibel allowance is forty-five when sound is from human voice. Placeworks does not take into accounts the difference of noise from existing ambience levels. The full report has been supported and I have copies here for you. I encourage you to accept one and read it. I would like to add a comment from the order owner of Saxalbe Engineering made in an email to us. So you know, I generally turn down this kind of thing, but the noise work here was so lacking that I really feel you deserve better as neighbors. Not only do we neighbors deserve better, but seriously, the school board deserves better. You deserve to have proper and accurate information for such an important vote. School board, I know in my heart that you're going to do the right thing and vote no on this specific project as it stands. But just as it stands today, let's build fields for the kids of Canyon Middle School for local sports leagues, but with surrounding community input with no lights and in compliance with the noise ordinance laws allowed by Alameda County.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tina Sax. Thank you for taking my comments tonight. Um, I'm a twenty-four year community member of Castro Valley. I am part of the original Measure G CBOC, um, committee, uh, working with Parveen, Sharon and, uh, Suzie Chan of the district. I worked or volunteered on the soccer club board for four or five years. Um, I have two grown children. One of them was here this evening standing behind me. I have two grown children. One of them was here this evening standing behind me now in college. I am a co-coach for the last 10 years of the Steel Gazelles Track and Field Club here in Castro Valley, where, you know, we send kids off to college D1 athletes. And we have struggled with access to safe and well-maintained fields before and after COVID. And I wholeheartedly support the development of these fields as designed, including the lights. And I know through my work with the district that the leadership team has done their due diligence. I trust them. I trust them implicitly. And I also support the contract between HARD and the district, including the lights, especially the lights. We need these lights. And I know that they're going to make, the district is going to make the right calls on behalf of the entire community. And so I'm excited to see this project come to fruition for the community. And, you know, thank you for your consideration. And I appreciate the, again, the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to call the next three speakers, Sabine Hensich, Virgil Evers, and John Hauser.
Good evening. I had written down, I want to address something that someone else has mentioned, but actually a lot of people have mentioned it. We are not some elitist folks up on a hill who don't want the kids to have fun. You know, I'm looking at these children in their jerseys and you're all adorable. And I'm from Germany. We have soccer European championship this month, so it's yay, you know, it's all great. So we're not against the soccer fields, but we want them to be done right, you know? What do I mean by that? People have already alluded to that. The current proposal lacks. It doesn't follow what is required for lighting. We heard from a lighting Moscow company. We hired a lighting expert and in terms of what the guy presented, he said he right. The light that will shine onto the field and the projections, he agrees with that 100%. However, what's missing is what these fields look like when they are illuminated. They will look like a giant 320,000 square feet billboard to anyone who's looking at them, humans, wildlife. You saw it on the photos that the lighting expert showed. The development should also ensure that the noise is tolerable. This is described by the Alameda County Noise Standards and so the proposal should follow that. I mean, we're talking hundreds of people every hour until 10:00 PM every day, 365 days a year, during summer closure every day from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. According to an acoustic expert we consulted and Cynthia so correctly referred his work already, the current plan substantially under predicts the noise levels. It currently doesn't account for the shape of the hills. People have mentioned that the sound travels upwards. That has not been accounted for in those projections that the school board has reviewed. On our everyday, I can hear the gravel crunch under the sneakers. I can hear your conversations down there. Two people walking together on the field and track round, I can hear what you're saying, but be careful. And add to that, you know, hundreds of people cheering, clapping, stomping their feet on the bleachers, portable PA systems. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm fine for the kids. I just don't want to go nuts in the process. So it looks like the project wouldn't satisfy the Alameda County Noise Standards, so we're asking for that to be the case. That needs to be implemented. So the way I see it, the sooner we're sticking our heads together and come to an agreement, the sooner these fields can be built. And I think that's something we all can agree on. Thank you.
Good evening, Castro Valley School Board members and the general public. Good to see everybody here tonight. I'm here to voice my concerns over the Canyon Middle School Field Development Project. A small group of neighbors, if we have heard and discovered that your original plan of only 34 pages was absolutely filled with discrepancy and inaccuracy, to the point that we all had to have the report recirculated. It was not something that was decided by the board or any of the school folks. It was the neighborhood that pointed out these problems. And that original plan passed unanimously. Now the plan is over 500 pages long and has changed from the original 170-foot light and closing hours of sundown to 15 stadium-style lights ranging from 65 feet to 90 feet tall. And the lights stay on until 10:00 PM. There needs to be an environmental impact report done. Throughout the Canyon Middle School Field Development Plan, Placeworks Design Company completed that it has stated that nothing is changing. The school is the same, so there is no change to the environment or the community. This is a ridiculous notion. That usage until 10:00 PM nightly, 365 days a year, will not drastically change everything about the surrounding community is just ridiculous. This is a picture from my backyard in the evenings. I noticed the gentleman with the lighting, he didn't show before and aftershocks. He said flatly at the end, it will be like there's a street light shining through, one single street light. Well, I don't want a street light in my living room until 10 o'clock at night, every night. That's ridiculous. So we all know that parking and drop off now is understatedly completely out of control. If we had perhaps another 80 players overlapping every hour, that will change the current situation. Traffic will worsen. So who do we call for help? Who's going to, do we have to keep coming back to the board meetings? What will the district do to create a liaison to handle our unsettled situations? I want the field developed. When I moved here 21 years ago, my children played down at the field. We need the field, no operation until 10 o'clock at night though. Thank you.
Okay, we have a online speaker, Lauren Mitchell. You have, oh, oh, I'm sorry. There's still, I did let you finish. Go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead.
My name is John Hauser. And I want to share with you that the neighbors bordering Canyon Middle School are now organized as Community Ridge Alliance Project. And yes, you can figure out what that spells. We have a sense of humor. We've hired our own lighting engineer. First of all, I'd like to show you who that group is. And could I see some signs to show you who we are? We hired our own lighting engineer to review the most recent IS MND done by Placeworks. We are submitting the report done by Michael Schrepp, lighting director, EXP Engineering in San Francisco to Lynn Novak this evening. I'd like to read a few of the highlights. In addition to the intensely glaring lighting currently coming from the school, clear the violation of Title 24, Part 11, BUG ratings, this field of illuminated artificial turf will fill the entire view shed looking west from Green Ridge Road and Crown Court and south from Trumpet Court with intense illumination. The study primarily looks at the illuminance of the field or the amount of lighting hitting the surface of the field and the direct illumination of the surrounding area light trespass. These measurements are only appropriate in establishing what the light from the floodlights are hitting, but not what people actually see. It's simply false to claim that the evening illumination of the field will have a less than significant impact on those living adjacent to the school. As stated above, the current lighting at the school is already negatively impacting residents, thus adding an additional 7.3 acres of brightly illuminated surface to the view would be, in fact, significantly worse. Finally, the proposed field illumination at night will look to the adjacent neighbors like a 350,000 square foot billboard. Thank you.
Okay, Amy, do we have other people online, by the way?
No.
Okay, so if Lauren Mitchell would please come, if you're inside the room, please fill out a blue card. Oh, are you Lauren Mitchell? Then come up forward.
Hi, my name's Lauren Mitchell and I live in the Green Ridge neighborhood. I just, I'm, I support the fields, but not as designed. I have a few key points as to why I believe this. First, lack of current infrastructure. We don't have completed sidewalks. We don't have traffic control at all the intersections in and out of the school. We don't have adequate parking and all of that is going to become more with, with this kind of activity. Second, the 10:00 PM curfew. We're a neighborhood. That's not being a good neighbor. Third, control of management. The money needs to go back into the schools. We need funding in our schools. Fourth, lack of neighbor input. I received the first letter from Sharon. She talked about reaching out back in 2016, 2017. The first letter I received came two weeks ago. The first email I received from her was on May 17th of '24. And lastly, the lights. I'm not a biologist, but I would imagine that an owl or other nocturnal animals aren't going to appreciate the height of the lights. Thank you.
Okay, our next three speakers will be Hazel Jacoby, Alexandra Joseph, and Bernard Gutman.
Good evening, everybody, the board, superintendent, and everybody else attending. I agree with what has been said. None of us have a problem with the kids having new fields, better fields, et cetera. That is not the problem. I live on Green Ridge Road. For the past couple of years, I have been involved with the Eden Area Traffic Safety Committee and their meetings. As the representative of Green Ridge wrote, I'm addressing traffic at this point in time. It is currently extremely dangerous to try and get on Crow Canyon Road from Green Ridge whenever school is coming in or going out. People park in all of the red zones. They just repainted the curbs and added more red. Doesn't matter. They're parked there. They're double parked. They're triple parked. I have tried to get down there when Green Ridge Road was totally blocked by drivers waiting for kids. At school dismissal, the parents park early to get their spot and frequently are there for more than an hour along both Green Ridge and Crow Canyon. In the red around the curve, you cannot get onto Crow Canyon using the access lane. Comments from neighbors include missed appointments because they couldn't get there. The dangers of the drivers that pull out without bothering to look and see if there is other traffic coming. The fact that they can't have a view of Crow Canyon if they're trying to get onto it to see if there are cars coming. And as people know, Crow Canyon drivers don't go slow. It can take, and also the danger for kids who cross Green Ridge or cross Crow Canyon trying to get to their rides. It can take 30 minutes or more to get from Redwood Road to Coal Canyon along higher at these times also. We know that law enforcement knows that. Law enforcement at these meetings has been notified. If they are able, they hang out, the drivers pay attention and disappear and don't do these things, but law enforcement has other duties as well. Julia Golden, a Canyon parent, writes about her son's experience with traffic. My son was riding his bike to and from school, but after three months, he was almost hit by cars twice. Both times the driver was at fault. He's an experienced biker. He's on a bike team. He no longer bikes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent Amari, and fellow community members. My name is Bernard Gutman and I'm the president of the Castro Valley Soccer Club and also a board member of our sister club Association Football Club. I'm here representing the nearly 2,300 young soccer players in our community, most of whom are CVUSD students. We're all here to express our unwavering support for the field project. We recognize and appreciate the decade-plus work that this board has put into giving our kids high-quality and safe places to play. The Canyon Project represents a beacon of hope for us. It promises a venue that meets our needs, complete with lighting that allows us to play during the shorter days of the year, and finally, an ADA-approved, an ADA-compliant artificial turf field for our TOPS program for kids with disabilities. We do not have that today in the district. Throughout the evening, you'll hear from members of our community addressing the specific concerns of some of the neighbors, including lights, noise, traffic. And while we understand their concerns, it is our belief that the, that the board through the Impact Study Commission has proven that the benefits of the project outweigh the manageable impacts it will have. While it's commendable that the board is considering the views of the neighbors, we know that you will do the right thing and prioritize the welfare and development of the district's nearly 10,000 students. One additional thing that I will point out, one of the big concerns has been noise. If you look last week, the California Supreme Court just ruled on a project in Parsons Park, noting that all social noise, so noise generated by people, which in our case for Castro Valley, we do not use amplification devices, megaphones, anything like that, only a whistle. Social noise should not be considered as part of the CEQA studies. So I just want to point that to you guys. So this project is a vital step forward for our community. It's going to allow our children to play locally and foster a strong sense of community. I urge the board to take the decisive step to fully approve the Canyon Field Project and do what's right by our children. Thank you for your time and dedication to making Castro Valley a better place for our youth. Thank you.
Wait for it to start counting. Okay. Hi, I'm Alex Joseph. Members of the board, superintendent, and fellow community members. I'm here as a representative of the Castro Valley Soccer Club where I currently serve as vice president. I'm a Castro Valley resident and a mother of four, the eldest of whom will attend middle school in the fall of 2025. I'm here to show support for the Canyon Middle School Fields Project. There have been concerns raised on the potential light pollution from the project, but per the expert analysis presented in the study, there will be zero incremental light pollution for neighboring properties. The closest homes on Trumpet Court are estimated to have a zero-foot candle impact from the new lights. Additionally, concerns around the incremental sound pollution. Per the expert analysis presented in the study, there will be zero-to-one decibel increment in sound from the usage of the facility. Effectively, a negligible amount of incremental sounds, given there will be no speaker systems or any other PA systems installed as per the project. I urge the board to consider that information presented in the study conducted when considering the concerns of the neighbors standing here today. My family and I hope that the board moves forward with this project as the positive impact that it will present to our community is incredible. And we look forward to being able to utilize it in the future. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker will be Val Giles. And after Val will be Norman Smith and Angelica AHL.
I'm Val Giles, and I've been a resident of Green Ridge for 55 years. My children went to Canyon High when it was a high school campus. I've always admired the fact that Hard places the community's health and welfare in the highest priority when they're taking on a project. In developing Canyon Field Project, Hard was responding to a need for the children on this side of Castro Valley to have more opportunities after school for after-school activities. They have to go out of town to play team games. Without such activities and with their youthful energy, children will often turn to mischief. We have received a letter from opponents of Canyon Field Project that makes false claims about the project. According to a Hard representative, the, the description of the lights and the continued, contained in the letter is incorrect and other details are overblown. Traffic in the area is the heaviest during the early morning drop-off and the mid-afternoon school dismissal time. I will always find, I have always found that Canyon Middle School has been a good neighbor. I want the children of our community to have a place to play outdoors in this beautiful town of ours. I want to give credit to Hard for picking up the project that the school district could not afford to do so. Thank you.
I want to talk to my neighbors. My name is Norman Smith, and I am this lady here the closest to that playing field than anybody. And over a period of time, extra things have happened in that playing field and caught that whole field on fire. Lights! And the fire department has come to my yard, turned down my benches to fight this fire. And if we allow this to happen, how much does your house be going to be devalued in price? Does anybody know that? Your house worth so much right now. If this goes in, can you guys want to take a 10, 15, or 25% devalue in your house? Think about that. Well, this area that we live right now is a nice, real nice living area. We allow this to happen, and ain't going to be that way no more. You're going to have traffic. You're going to have noise. And a lot of us is going to have lights shining in our eyes. Few people understand that. And you're going to have tracking up your ass all over the place. Think about it. I say no. Now and forever.
Is Angelica Hall here?
All.
All, okay.
Well, that's going to be very hard to follow a former Green Beret. So, my, my green boxes. My name is Angelica Hall. So I live directly above the soccer fields. I'm in disapproval of this proposal for the Canyon Middle School Athletic Fields Project. The fields have been used for, currently and in the past, the fields have been used for non-school functions such as the 24/7 Soccer League games, Footy Fest, CVI baseball games, Relay for Life, and all that I'm okay with. They are events that happen during the day and for a short period of time. It's children noises. It's, it's good causes. But already, as it is, I find alcohol, beer cans, bottles, debris in my yard. My concern with this project is the increased foot traffic, more littering, higher fire hazard, vandalism, property damage, theft, decreased property value, quality of life, not just from the noise that will be going on seven days a week from 10:00 PM until 10:00 PM, and most importantly, my privacy. I work at 4:00 AM. I need to be in bed by 6:00 PM. My bedroom directly faces the middle school. This, this will not only, the noise and the light alone will not only disrupt my sleep, it will keep me up at night, affect my work performance. It's an invasion to my privacy. It is difficult for me, you know, it would be very difficult for me to have a decent night's rest, which I'm entitled to. By all means, the school-aged children should have safer and upgraded fields. However, I am a homeowner, I as a homeowner should not have my quality of life diminished, my safety put at risk due to more traffic. You know, my kids played for 24/7. My daughter roughed for the organization. So I'm all for you guys having upgraded fields. That's great and all, but having these, having these fields till 10:00 PM, that's just absolutely ridiculous. It's, 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 and the musco lighting. If you notice really quick, you talk about good neighbor policy, no air horns, no loud noise, but they are still present. They still bring them. You don't have control of what people do. You can even say, yeah, they're not allowed, but they still bring them. The little rattlers, everything. And, okay, so here, we talked about the pictures that he showed. So he showed the area between Highwood and Green Ridge, right? That's very far from the field. He shows Crown Court, that's still way above the field. He shows an area with the soccer, and there are homes within that grid. That's my home. That's Norman Smith's home. So he didn't take into account, he's showing these pictures of homes that are farther away from the soccer fields, and we're talking soccer fields. He's only showing homes that are close to the football field, not the soccer fields, which, mind you, our neighborhood is directly within that grid line he showed.
Our next three speakers are Joyce Bunch, Bernie Gutman III, and Barone Stefan. Joyce Bunch was first. Okay.
You all have to come up when we call you. It's in order received. Please, thank you.
Good evening. Obviously, my name is Joyce. You know, I have read the revised ISMD, MND from Placeworks, and there is something that I just can't really wrap my head around.
The, you can hear me. The initial document, which you adapted in January of this year, calls for a field upgrade with one 70-foot light, which would be turned off at dusk according to the current park hours. That's what it says, and you all signed off on that. Something just felt a little off on that. So now we have a revised document that said there will be rental facility with 15 lights up to 90 feet tall in operation until 10:00 PM every, could be every day, 365 days a year. And while the Placework study has changed, the original architect plans and intended usage have not. So those are pretty huge errors in admissions. Got to be at least a million-dollar error. No apologies, no outreach. So what I've been struggling with is to figure out how, as custodians of a $14 million project, you could have ever adapted to this first study, which, excuse me, study, with such obvious and important glaring errors. So Placework recommends that we accept good neighbor policies to mitigate nuisances to our neighborhoods, but knowingly adapting a bad study sure doesn't sound to me like something a good neighbor would do. Quote, "a good neighbor." But that is exactly what you did. So be a good neighbor, clean up that mess, and please vote no.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Amari, and everyone here. My name is Bernie Guman, and I'm 11 years old. I play soccer with Castro Valley Soccer Club. Soccer is important to me because it helps me stay active, make friends, and learn valuable life skills like teamwork. I know my teammates and I have to travel a long way for practices and games because we don't have enough high-quality fields in Castro Valley. The CVUSD fields we have access to today are dangerous as they're filled with holes and rocks. The new fields at Canyon Middle School would be amazing for us. It would mean we can play more soccer without going far, and with the lights, it would mean we don't have to cut practices short during daylight saving. I know that there are some neighbors that don't want this project, and I know that you would do the, what is right for the kids in our district. Let's score a goal together and approve the field project so my friends and I can have a great place to play soccer in our own community. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stefan Baron. I'm representing Castro Valley Soccer Club. I'm in support of this Canyon Middle School lighted field. You know, I think sport is very important to the education of the kids, right? Lights are very important. All of this field will be used by youth, or youth sports. Finding a bottle of beer in the backyard won't happen because this field will be only used for youth sports, or most of them. And the reason for that is because between the agreement with Hard and Castro Valley Unified School District, the school and district get first priority booking, then CVU Sports, nonprofit, then Hard or RIU Sports, nonprofit, then the general public. Given the needs of the district, Castro Valley Soccer Club, CV Independent League, and CV Little League, we believe there will be no spare time for usage by any additional outside party. CVSC alone, if we could, would book all of hours from 4:00 to 10:00 PM on weekdays and 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM on weekends. But we know that the school and other organization will also be asking for time, and we want to ensure that all CV District and CV Sports League are able to use this facility. Just pointing out that we alone as a club have enough demand to book all hours if we could, and that random adults playing on the field is just another uninformed opinion from the neighbors. You know, on the money part, Hard runs its field at a substantial discount to a market rate to enable clubs like ours to have access to high-quality field at a low cost. And Hard actually expect to lose money from this investment. They are making the investment for community improvement and greater access to safe facilities for our communities. And once again, I think light are very important in order to provide access to sports to all the kids. You know, during the winter, the sun, sunset is at like 5:00, 5:30, right? How many kids can play between 4:00 and 5:30? That's my question. How many field do we have in Castro Valley? So I'm in favor and I'm supporting the Canyon Middle School lighted field. Thank you.
Okay. Our next three speakers are Cedric Jernigan, Johanna Lockwood, and Signio Vigia.
Hi, my name is Cedric Jernigan. I'm a 24-year resident here in Castro Valley. Moved here with my, my wife and my daughter before she was about one-year-old. Moved here because Castro Valley had great schools. We stayed and made a life here because Castro Valley has great people, and the people here take care of each other, try to make things better, and I was very impressed with that. I am the referee coordinator for Castro Valley Unified, excuse me, for Castro Valley Soccer Club. And for a very long time, the Canyon Fields were unusable and unsafe. So since 2019, students have, the players have been scattered. We're in the hills of Hayward. We are in North Hayward near Union City. We are in San Lorenzo and so on. So we're scattered, and it degrades our sense of community and belonging together. And that's the thing that's important. I've heard the conversation about the traffic conditions and all that, and I'm thinking about how Canyon has always been a primary place that we did our games. We would be there from 8:00 in the morning to dusk all day on Saturday. There was never a problem with ingress and egress. There was always plenty of parking. We had really no problems. So I'm confused on what's going to be different because we had eight to 10, we had six to eight fields simultaneously hosting games all day, nonstop. Nope. The in and out wasn't a problem. The parking wasn't a problem. So what I would like is for us to support this so we can bring our kids back home and keep our community together and keep Castro Valley a great place.
Good evening, members of the Castro Valley Unified School District. My name is Joanna Lockwood, and I'm the secretary of the Castro Valley Soccer Club Board. I'm here to express my support of the Canyon Field Project and to share a few words with you just about why you should vote yes on this measure. I've changed my speech a few times just listening to all of the different arguments throughout the night, and so a few of my talking points have changed. And one of the things that I kind of just, you know, connected the dots on is that one of your strategic priorities as a board is your students. And really what this proposal is about is about our student athletes. And there is an overwhelming amount of evidence that demonstrates that student athletes have much better positive long-term lifelong outcomes. There's evidence with the University of San Diego that shows that students who played sports had greater physical habits, developed a lot, better self-confidence, and built a lot of character. In a recent study, they found that students who participated in youth sports had a greater academic success, which leads to lower dropout rates, as well as a higher, statistically significant acceptance into attending college. And so with all that being said, is that there is really an unmet need in our community for these fields. Year over year, the Castro Valley Soccer Club has had to turn away participants for, that want, were interested in our program because of the lack of fields. And so by providing us this opportunity to provide this field, you're not only creating greater access for the soccer club and for other sports, youth sports that would be utilizing the field, you're really investing in the long-term success of the student athletes within our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, is Signio Vigia here?
Good evening. My name is Signo Vijay. I'm the volunteer director for Castro Valley Soccer Club. As someone who has seen the firsthand the impact, the quality of fields that, that can bring on to these young athletes, I'm here to express my support for the Castro. I'm here to express my support for the Canyon Field Project. I believe this project will provide the community, the youth, with safe and accessible spaces to play, learn, and grow. Now, we know there have been some concerns expressed about the use of artificial turf. So let me address that. The material that's been used in this development is cork infill, which is non-toxic. It's a far cry from the Hasada's rubber infill that's been used, that's been known to cause the issues. And while it may seem this synthetic turf could lead to more injuries, in our experiences, poor grass field conditions have resulted in far more accidents than over time. So we have seen kids who break ankles and tear ligaments due to the poor grass conditions, and we have seen fear of these injuries on the turf. So that, not to say these injuries won't happen at all, but I'm here to believe artificial turf is much more a safer choice compared to the grass. So let's be real, it requires very less maintenance. So I urge the board to take a decisive step and fully approve the Canyon Field Project. My kid goes to the elementary school in Independent. So I'm here as a representative for all the young athletes to hear the voice. There is a study in front of you. Please urge, have a look at this, the report, and please approve this. Thank you.
All right, we have two last speakers. They are Andrea. Oh, do we? Okay. Okay, well, bring the cards up. Let me announce these two people, and if there are any other cards. Andrea Stern and Fan Zhang He.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Stern, and I have lived in the Green Ridge neighborhood for ten years and Castro Valley for twenty years. And my three children all have been through the Castro Valley schools, and my youngest son was an Avid player with the Castro Valley Soccer Club. We are pro soccer. We are pro kids. We are pro a safe field. We are pro collaboration. We are pro genuine community coming together to meet everyone's needs in the best way possible. I'm touching on some of the concerns that have already been mentioned, but I also don't think they can be emphasized enough because it is concerning how they were not emphasized initially. What's up? First of all, the issue with the lighting. We have now been informed that there are going to be up to fourteen or fifteen lights up to ninety feet tall. This is kind of unspeakable. I don't think I have to say why this is this is going to be an intolerable level of light pollution for people living in Green Ridge. We're also very concerned about the sound impacts from fans, from PA systems, and just the volume of people who are going to be passing through and rooting as they should for their players and having a good time, which we want, but not until ten PM. Another concern that we have is around traffic safety, the safety of children, the safety of players, of families. As someone already said, we have lost one child in this community, in this family due to this kind of stress-based driving that happens around school drop-off and pickup times. Another concern I want to emphasize is the issue of fire safety. We've already had on Crown Court a massive grass fire that practically came within a few feet of taking out four or five houses at the bottom of Crown Court. It was very scary, and it was a very close call, and it was set in the fringes off of the field by people who were there, and there will be more people there, and there will be more wandering, and there will be more danger there. We're also concerned about the environmental impact and the habitat impacts to what we cherish in Green Ridge as an urban wildlife interface area. We are blessed to be able to listen to owls at night, to have migratory birds, raptors. We have all kinds of wildlife that is not going to actually thrive or even probably stick around, and this is part of an ongoing issue around habitat loss. Someone else has mentioned the Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a big, a long speech paper that I prepared, and I just want to say that the kids are here, they want their fields, and they don't want their practice to be cut down during the, you know, wintertime because we do cut down their practice, and then they can't play longer enough, and then they don't feel like supported. So we just hope that we can get better field and that we can have the kids practice as their needs and to, you know, help the kids build their future. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, I think it says Samantha Sema or Soma. And then we'll have Jose Leon and Kevin Tibbetts.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry I couldn't address you on Zoom. You've heard, I'm Samantha Soma. I've been a Green Ridge resident for, since two thousand thirteen. And the concerns I have about the project result are related to the process. The project may have been in the works for years, but you've heard that neighbors weren't informed until very recently, and their request for information and dialogue have received interesting responses. The sophistication and depth of the environmental impact report for the construction phase was very well researched, which leaves me wondering why the impact of the finished project didn't receive the same treatment, much less productive outreach to neighbors. Right. So there's a false dichotomy here between newbie neighbors whose selfish needs are being placed in opposition to an updated school field for the legitimately deserving students of Canyon Middle School. It's unfortunate that their needs, which to hear it from the speakers tonight, have been unmet for years, and also unfortunate that this is the project that was chosen to meet those needs. We've heard a lot of light pollution and noise pollution, and also the claim that the noise will be negligible in surrounding areas. But I'd ask all of you to consider all the noise you've just heard outside this room tonight from kids playing while we've been listening, and some of the spirited and vocal support and clapping in this room for support of the field. And consider the amount that four hundred people might make every night down the block from where you live until ten PM in sporadic bursts that you can't predict or control or sleep through. If the CV Football Club gets their way, the field will absolutely enjoy full and constant use until ten PM. I'm pretty sure most kids are long in bed after nine PM. So let's think about what we're doing. We want to support the kids, and we're being made enemies of them because we don't support hard monetized use of the field, which conservatively will make over half a million dollars for them every year. So given all the comments that have taken place, I'm requesting that the board vote no on this project so that a legitimate study of the actual project and its impact can take place. A project that couldn't pass a planning board should not be passed by the school board. Thank you.
We should have Kevin Tibbetts and Jose Leon.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who showed up tonight. My name is Kevin Tibbetts. I'm, my family moved to Castro Valley in nineteen eighty-six. I went away to college and came back to raise my family in this community in large part because of the youth sports program and all the different various youth sports programs that we have. But there's one area amongst our community that is long, long in need of improvement, and that is the Canyon sports fields. I've had friends ruin their sports careers playing on that field. I don't want to send my kids out there to play at this point, you know. And I heard all the concerns from the community, and I think it's great that you guys have organized and that our kids can see what, you know, that we have good grassroots organizations, just like our soccer club. We have community organizations, you know, and we have this healthy debate that we talk about these things. I don't think we should throw the baby out with bathwater on this. I think we absolutely need these sports fields. I think there's room for flexibility and for some compromise on this, and it shouldn't be black and white necessarily. However, 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 I do think some of these concerns are blown way out of proportion. I live right across the street from Castro Valley High School on East Somerset Avenue on the other side of Redwood Road, and the noise and light pollution doesn't bother me. Been there for thirteen years. My wife has spent her entire life, we live next to her parents, hasn't been a problem. So to you, Sterling, I love, love hearing the roar of the crowd and the cheers. Makes me feel like I'm part of a community, you know. I love seeing the kids play out there. You know, it gets, it gets me going. It makes me feel like I'm part of a place where people are invested in their community, right? In terms of the light pollution, I could see those concerns, but, you know, I don't have an issue with it. I'm not sure how adequately those were addressed because I'm not a light technician. But unless you're, you know, standing out in front of your light looking down on that field all night, I think there are ways to mitigate that as a homeowner as well, and some of those compromises that we can make as well. I, in terms of the fire and the risk of that, I think, I don't, I think that's a little blown out of proportion as well, you know. My father was a firefighter in this, my father was actually a firefighter here in this community for thirty-two years. He was on that fire, sir, helped, helped, helped to do it. But I think that that is a risk that is going to happen when you live next to a school, and there's ways for us to mitigate that as well. And I don't think that we should, I don't think that we should throw this proposal out, and I don't think we should vote no on this. I think there are ways and policies that both the school district and Hard can have to somewhat appease the, you're not going to please everybody, I don't think. But I think there are ways on a policy level, once this is approved, in order to mitigate a lot of these concerns. And thank you for your time, and I really, really hope that you guys vote on this project because my kids could really, really use this. Us parents are out there trying to make it so these kids aren't going to steal your car someday, so please help us, help us.
One more.
Good evening, everyone. Jose Leon, I run this community soccer program from like two thousand eight. I have two young daughters that go to Palomares Elementary. And then I just wanted to tell you guys, in order for me to run this program, I need a field because my reason that I run this program is to keep the kids out of drugs, alcohol. Like last month, we had two kids crash in front of my house, a fourteen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old. I don't know if you got that news, but the younger brother killed his brother because he was driving on Palomares Road where I live so fast. And then for me to see that, that a young kid that lost his life because he had nothing to do after school, but if we had this field, we could have this after-school curriculum activities, right? I mean, in this group, we have a group of about two hundred and sixty people. We have to have fences that stone break, dog pond, just till I have this soccer program, you know. If I run this soccer programs after ten, like from eight to ten, right now, they're about to play at eight, and that's basically, that's where I'm going right after this, is to keep these kids out the streets. And that's what I do, you know. I'm more concerned about, you know, I love the kids. I know they're going to, you know, need the fields in the future, but I'm more concerned about the kids that get out of high school, those people that have broken families because they don't have parents to watch them after school. And that's what I do is to keep the kids out the streets so they don't go to jail, you know, after high school. The majority of them end up doing drugs, alcohol after ten PM. Where do you go? To a bar, club, you know. But if I get tired, if I have a soccer pickup and I get tired, they'll probably just not end up going to those places. And that's basically the reason I do this, you know, I do it for the community. And in order for me to do this thing, I need a field, you know, with light so we can actually, you know, run this program, you know, and save lives, you know. If you don't think about like the lighting and the house burning going down, you know, at the end of the day, you know, saving lives and saving these kids off the street and keeping them off the drugs and alcohol is the most important thing at the end of the day. That's all I say.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. That is the end of the public hearing. We will now, oh. One online then, sorry. I did say. Okay, who is it that's online? Thank you.
Yes, hello. This is Bruce Doogie. I support the project as it is. I also live very close to Castro Valley High School, about two hundred feet. I can see the high school from my house, and I've never really had any problems with the light or the noise. I occasionally hear some of the kids at Castro Valley Elementary, which brings me joy, just like one of the speakers said, it's a really nice sound. I, so I do support it. My daughters were very athletic, and they spent lots, many, many hours up at Canyon Middle School fields. They did track and field and cross-country. And I think they would have definitely benefited by having some lights, you know. That was really a restriction time-wise without, without having lights. So I definitely support the project. I think it's great for the community. I think a lot of these comments, particularly about the traffic, are really red herrings because they've been using those fields. The soccer club has been using those fields for years and years and years. It's a much less traffic than pickup and drop-off. It's not in the same, not even in the same league. I also think home values, I think, I think home values will actually go up. I don't think they'll go down. I think anytime you add something like that to a place, it actually adds value. That's the whole point. So I totally don't agree that home values are going to, to go down. So there's a few of those things I just, I think, a little bit overblown, that's all, that I've heard complaints of. So I guess that's it. Please vote for, for the fields. Can't wait to get them. I was just actually recently at Palomares Elementary where they have a nice field without lights, and that field is gorgeous. Finally got to see it for the first time today, actually. And so we need more sports, sports fields and sports facilities because we have very few parks here in Castro Valley. Thanks.
Okay, again, I would like to thank all of our speakers and people who made comments here. Thank you very much. We take everything into consideration. That will be the end of the public hearing now. And we will have a five-minute recess. And we will have a five minute recess. Okay, uh, we are back in session now and, uh, we have, um, we're in item six, California School Boards, Employees Associations, and Castro Valley Teacher Association Reports. Do we have anybody from, uh, CIA? Do we have anybody from CTA? No, all right. Uh, we are at the point where it says public comment for items not on the agenda. And, um, we have, um, we have three people, I believe, although two people have the same last name. We're not sure if that's, um, two people speaking or one. Um, the first blue card I have is, uh, my Lou. Okay, come on up.
So I have to wait for the green light?
No, the green light is on.
Okay, so I can speak now, right? Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for taking the comments. I have a different, uh, topic tonight, talking about school safety. I have two kids attending Castro Valley High School here, and I have been a member of parent volunteer for 10 years as, uh, my kids four. I want to bring it up to your attention about a school safety and how the school handle the situation. My son suffered three head injury from school, elementary school, two time, 2017, 2019, and 2024 this year, February 16th recently. And I'm disappointed how the school handle it when come to the head injury concussion. Uh, my son were during PE class were purposely attacked by another student, which is double his side, come toward and attack him, push him, so he fell backward and hit his head. He suffered a head injury concussion. Um, the school did not come and help him, did not call medical services for him. And the attacker were there with him and tried to shock him because he passed out. And that's what happened. And I'm very concerned about how the school, um, address this kind of head injury. So we have email with the principal, took them more than two weeks to respond for each email, uh, email. Um, and I request the protocol safety training because the principal told us that they have it at the beginning of school year. I email on, um, May 24, I believe, until now, I haven't got a copy of it. And I did send, uh, another email to the district, uh, probably on June 7th recently, and I'm still waiting for that. And the school told us that they did everything according to the protocol. So I questioning like when come to head injury concussion, like did, how you gonna deal with it? Are you gonna call medical, uh, services to help the kid? Um, the school principal, uh, at Chris I were quiet. And I said, is that sad to leave your victim with somebody like just did it to your kid? She just shook her head. But, um, I request a protocol until now, I still have not got it. And that's what my concern because, uh, the kids supposed to go to school and enjoy to be in school and focus on learning, but not to worry about the safety and being bullied and attacked by other student. Now my son telling me, mom, I'm very scared that I have to go to high school because there are two people who attacked him in 2019 and recently they are going to be in high school. And I don't know whether they're gonna be in contact, but my next thing is that I'm planning to filing a restraining order because that's my plan because I'm not hearing enough of how the school resort a system that the, the, my concern, I haven't hear anything. So that's my concern. I want to bring it up to the school board and thank you for listening. That's my concern. Thank you.
So our other person is, uh, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Is, uh, Chow Lo should be online, is that right? Or you're here? You're here, great. Please come up.
I'm gonna add more detail to my wife's, uh, speaking. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Chow Liu, father of two kids attending, uh, school in Castro Valley. I want to bring your attention, uh, to the head injury of my son in this, especially the most reasons on February 16th, 2024. The lack of appropriate safety protocol and the lack of sense of concern that surrounding this type of incident. On February 16th, 2024, a classmate at Chris I Middle School purposely put his hand on my son and kept pushing him until he fell and hit the back of his head on the ground, causing a concussion and resulting in, in consciousness. The PE teacher, the health officer, and the principal did not call medical emergency service. Why didn't the school call an ambulance for my son? There was a PE teacher substitute nearby, nearby as seen on some video, video, fell in their supervisory duty. The student who assaulted my son, dropped my sons up off the ground and shook him until he gained consciousness. This is a really dangerous way to handle an injured person and could result in spinal cord injury. This instance shows a serious lack of supervision, negligence, and serious failure of the school in handling my son's head injury. And she may lie safety protocol puts student at great risk. We don't want this happen again to my son or any other student. We must have accountability and change. Principal, Ms. Sheen and Ms. Wolf claimed that they have followed the protocol and called us. We question the principal. If she realize the seriousness of the situation when a student has report a head injury. Not only does a head injury, but he also have headache and memory loss. He could not record what happened after the incident. We even asked in the context of maiden's head injury and aftermath symptom. I saw the principal, the pictures like this. Do you still believe that you don't need to call medical emergency server? The principal keeps silent and shook their heads. The lack of compassion, sense of concern and urgency of the school faculty is a disgrace. According to Castro Valley Unified School District website under safety code 5142 AR, it calls the superintendent or destiny shall ensure that the teacher teaches a playground supervisor, YAs and volunteers who supervise student receive training in safety practice and in supervisory technique that will help you run problem and resolve conflicts among student. The training shall be documented and kept on file. So we request a copy of head injury protocol from the principal.
Thank you, Mr. Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Amanda Carey.
It's time to close the high school campus and protect our kids in the schools. I have heard your reasons for not wanting them back. Kids felt intimidated, teachers and admins don't want them back. Parveen said she got rid of them for budget issues and because she felt the cops should look like her. Again, I don't understand what you meant by that. My understanding is all the officers were individuals of color. Do we not want white cops on campus? I hate to break it to you, but your entire school board is white. The bottom line is if we're gonna make it a, you're making it a political issue and not a safety issue. For those board members up for reelection, I would be running on school safety. Dolly, I would worry less about who's running against you and more about how you're going to provide value to our students and to our district. I think it's important for members of our community to know that these three trustees are up for reelection, Michael, Dolly, and Lavender. All are not in support of SROs returning to our district. I also heard Lavender doesn't want to run again, and if somebody with like minded would replace her, then, um, she would not rerun. And I think it's important for the community to know that this is the, the board that you have. Um, we have, as the community elected you and entrusted you to keep our community and protect our children. You have all failed. Since the guns incident on January 31st, there have been numerous incidents and many of them involving non-students coming onto campus. 29 fight. 227 student with a knife. 229 fight, police report number 2915. 34 fight, police report 354. 411 fight, no complaint filed. 412, non-student on campus challenging fights, police report 4818. 416, student threat, threatened to blow up the school. 423 fight. 429, non-student on campus challenging fights. 430 fight. 56 fight. 516 fight. 524 fight. On the 524 fight, no complaint was filed. The child was taken to Kaiser by his parents. Kaiser reported it for as mandated reporters because there was no incident filed with the school. So they wanted to make sure the child was not a victim of child abuse. Had the school called, maybe the parents wouldn't have gone through all that hoops of being accused of child abuse by the hospital. Again, I must stress that Parveen is failing at her job to reduce liability exposure by not instructing administrators to get sheriff's department and EMS involved. The fight on 524 is a perfect example of students needing medical treatment and you guys doing nothing to get them help. I let Nick McMaster know that you have said that it's up to administration whether or not SROs return to our district. You can imagine his surprise when he felt that that was definitely not the case.
Okay, we, um, that is the end of public comment for items not on the agenda. Uh, we are now going to go on to number eight, consent agenda.
A move that we accept the, um, consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, um, are there any comments anybody has on those? Um, so, uh, for our vote, uh, trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Howard?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And, oh, um,
I'll vote yes.
Just be Kuziak? Yes, thank you. Um, so that will make, uh, 5-0 on the consent agenda. Um, we will go on to number nine, reports, discussions, and action items. So I'm going to open up the public hearing for the, um, um, local control accountability plan.
Yes, good evening, board members and, um, cabinet members and of the stakeholders that we have left in the audience right now. Tonight I have the pleasure of talking with you about our local control accountability plan, which is our LCAP. Yes, so board members know that, um, the LCAP is really kind of our guide around continuous improvement with our Castro Valley programs. Um, we, it is very much focused, laser-like focus on achievement and success for all of our students. And of course, the state wants us, every school district to have local control with accountability and transparency to our community. An overview of the LCAP is really, but you, that folks need to know is that by July 1st, um, every school district in, uh, in, in California is, is responsible for getting their LCAP, approved LCAP to their county office of education. And so we are in that same boat. And so we will be sending our approved LCAP, if all goes well, um, by July 1st to the Alameda County Office of Education. And what that looks like from a high level overview is that we need to have two board meetings in the month of June, tonight's public hearing. Um, and then another one for approval and on, it's at the June 26th board meeting. Then we're responsible for getting our LCAP to the Alameda County Office of Education on or before July 1st. They then turn around and give any, if they need to, um, clarifying question letters out to school districts by August 15th. And then by October 8th, they approve all of the LCAPs in the county. So what's new for the, um, new, we have a new LCAP, um, template, and that's kind of one of the biggest changes. So we're kind of resetting, um, for the next three years. And for this year's LCAP, we are focusing really our local control, um, um, our LCFF dollars, supplemental dollars, which are focused on, uh, low income, English learners, and foster youth. So our LCAP is, although we, the LCAP supports all of our students, there's a targeted support for those three, um, student groups. Um, there's something new called the Equity Multiplier Goal for Redwood High School, and I'll tell you a little bit about that when we get to goal four. Um, but that's new to the LCAP. And then what's probably the biggest change is that every one of our actions now has a metric that's tied directly to that action. And what's different is the past LCAP has had a number of metrics that apply to just kind of in general every goal and action. Now we have, every action has a direct metric appointed to it so that we're progress monitoring very targeted and strategically. So that's a big difference. Um, as far as engaging our educational partners this Um, as far as engaging our educational partners this year, um, we always do a really good job of making sure that we uh gather feedback from all of our, our D LAC, our African American Parent Advisory, our Padres Unidos, um, our DSLA, our PLCs, our PLC. And we've done that again this year. In addition to that, because we wanted to go one step further, is every one of our principals at our sites presented had a site LCAP presentation. Um, so that we wanted to make sure that we were reaching as large of audience as we possibly can. And so we thought that that was an extra layer of um of presentation and gathering um input from our community. We also used a tool called the Thought Exchange Surveying. And so that tool really allowed us to not only get information out and and gather information, but also anybody that participated in that survey also got to rate other people's comments. Um, so we think we did a really um, an even enhanced more job in regards to engaging our educational partners and getting good feedback. Components of the plan summary, there's a kind of laid out for us. There's a general information section. There's an annual performance that kind of goes and says, how are we doing as far as our metrics are concerned? Um, then there's a reflections piece with technical assistance. We were in differentiated, differentiated assistance. Um, last year, we jumped out of differentiated assistance by a lot of hard work by our administrators and teachers um around, especially around chronic absenteeism. And so we are no longer in differentians assistance. So that's a celebration for us. Um, we also have never had the status of comprehensive support and improvement, so we've never been in CSI status. All right, so goals and actions. Again, this is a continuous improvement process. We are establishing a baseline this year. So for the next, this is big twenty four, twenty five is our baseline year and the next three years, this new LCAP template will cover. Um, we're really focused on doing some, you know, progress monitoring around our metrics. Now that we have a metric that's assigned to every action, we're going to be closely following that throughout the year. Um, and we're also going to do that around our fiscal, um, making sure that where we're putting our dollars, they're really having the impact that we want to have. All right, so we've got in the, in the LCAP, you've got goals, you've got metrics, you've got the analysis of the goals and then the actions. Um, so let's talk about the goals, four areas, uh, four goal areas. Goal one, teaching and learning that hasn't changed. Goal two, culture and climate, and we're really talking about student engagement there. For goal three, parent empowerment, parent engagement involvement. And then that's number four, which is new, and equity multiplier specifically focused on Redwood High School. So the goals themselves, um, goal one, teaching and learning covers in this particular, we have eleven actions. And they range, I'm not going to go through all of them, but multi tiered systems of support. We've been talking about M T S S for a while. It's about teachers and educators collaborating around data to make really informed decisions about instruction, intervention, acceleration. Um, we've got our English language learners, I'll go one point three, really talking about how do we make sure that our English learners are learning the language of English and learning the content. So we talk about designated and integrated E L D. And I'll just go over one more, one point seven, professional development. We do a lot of professional development in the district and it focuses on content areas as well as how do we make sure that we are culturally responsive in our practices and our daily practices, in the materials that we use, um, and in the ways of being. So those are just some of the actions that are in goal number one. Goal two is again around student engagement. We call it culture and climate. Um, and we take our social emotional learning slash anti bias, anti racism work very seriously um in support of students. So we have social workers, we have counselors, we have behaviorists, we have our wellness centers. Um, we have our social emotional anti bias, anti racism teacher on special assignment. Those are some of the actions that are in that particular goal. And we get to goal three around parent engagement. Um, our parent and uh parent community liaison, Tilsia is amazing in her outreach and support of our families. We do a lot of work around making sure that our materials that we put out to our community are understandable. So we do a lot of translation work. Um, and then of course, supporting, doing that extra support for our students that are facing unstable housing. So those are three areas, three actions um under parent engagement. And last but not least, we have our Equity Multiplier Goal, which is again new for Redwood High School. Um, the state does a calculation around stability rate and low income. They combine that and they come up with a calculation and they name certain schools um that to be their Equity Multiplier Schools and everyone that's every school that's named that then has to have a goal in the LCAP. And then the school itself has to outreach to the community, get feedback, get additional layer of feedback about how can we enhance our program to serve our students even better. Um, and so Redwood School did that um and reached out to their community and they came back with, we want more counseling. We think we really need to continue to build community, have opportunities to build um community, which included those extracurricular activities, reduce class size and then more professional development for the adults on campus. Those were the different areas that came up um in their needs assessment um and from their community. And so that's, those are the things, there's money that comes with um being an Equity Multiplier School, which is not always usual, but in this particular case, monies do come. And so those are the things, those are the actions that the school will be spending to enhance their programs. So what is next is um on June twenty sixth, we will bring the LCAP back for approval before the board. Um, we will also then, if all things go well, uh, get the LCAP to our county by July first. And then we are ready for questions.
Gary, you have a question?
I'm a little unclear on this equity multiplier thing still. Uh, I know you went over there a bit, but what are they calculating? I mean, can you give me a sort of an idea?
So I'll, so I'll, I'll kind of read what they have said. Um, so as far as the stability rates, they, so they take, first they take our, they take the low income students that are people of the greater, greater than seventy percent. They combine that with what they call this, the California Department of Education says, the stability rate, which is a metric that measures student turnover by calculating the percentage of students who do not complete more than approximately two thirds of the school year. They combine that all together and come up with a calculation. I am not a metrics person, but they do a calculation and maybe Superintendent Amadi knows a little bit more. Um, but they put that calculation together and then determine what schools come up on that list as the highest need schools.
So how this came about, if you remember about a few months ago, you heard about a lawsuit against the state of California because of COVID. So what happened is when schools didn't get opened, the families of students who were the most disadvantaged actually uh filed the lawsuit against the state saying, why did you not open the school? And when you did, when it was closed, not everybody had access to computers and all sorts of things. So kids fell behind and they weren't coming to school. So as a part, as a result of that lawsuit, it, the, the state had to actually set aside, I mean, I can't remember how much it was, it was like uh three, four billion dollars that they have to now disperse throughout the state. And we only have one school that qualifies for being, having uh students who are socio socio economically disadvantaged and also not there throughout the year because it's a continuation school. So, but there are districts that almost every one of their schools now get funding in addition to concentration and supplemental to um to do additional work for students who um basically are marginalized and historically underserved. So that's how that came about. So it was called an Equity Multiplier. And the way they figured out how to do this, they actually worked with a group at UCLA to look at like transience rate and all of that. And um, that was a, it was a very interesting way of dispersing the money. So I think we got about a hundred some thousand dollars.
Yeah, I had a question too. Uh, I had a question and you might not be able to answer this because it's so specific, but um there, i- in reading the LCAP, there was this uh, there was a part of it where you're listing a lot of different programs and things like that. And there's, um, there are about like eleven hundred uh students enrolled in C T E programs, but not that many finishing. And I was wondering what was with the statistics of that? Is it because there are four years worth of kids in there and it's only out of twenty five percent? Or what, what is that number? Or could you tell me about it later if you don't have it off the top of your head now?
So let me get that information and I can get that back to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Do you want to add?
I'm pretty sure because they count as someone with C T if you take it four years. So a lot of kids might just take one, one year, but I'm sure uh Ms. Resichi can find the exact answer.
Okay, I was just curious what that was.
That's a great question.
Uh, oh, another, sorry.
This is my comment, um, but I just wanted to say that I'm always really glad to see us try to prioritize community development within our schools. Um, I think that's important, not just for our students and teachers, but also for their families. Um, and so to see that listed as a actual concrete goal uh is kudos, I mean, I like seeing that. I'll be curious to see what comes of it for the Redwood community in particular.
I, can I just, I just want to share my just appreciation of what Mia and her team and working with Suzie. Now you're going to hear the, I mean, the, this template was new. We pushed for this template to be the way it is because it was so different before. But I can tell you, they spend hours and hours because it was the first time they had to use this and then send it to the county and then the county had questions and then they had to respond back to that. It's a lot of work, but now that we have it, it's our baseline and it should be a lot better as we move forward. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
If I could brag about us just a little bit because um the county, um, so there is a process where we turn our, for our first version in, the county gives you feedback and then we give them the final version before we come before the board. And um what's interesting is they ended up using some of our LCAP to as exemplars, their language exemplars for other school districts. So that's a proud moment for us because there were a lot of hours that went into getting it done. And I want to also compliment Ms. Amy Kair because the use of the Thought Exchange as a tool to help us generate more input, more feedback and to have parents and care, other caregivers give rate other people's feedback so we could see what comes to the top. It's a really powerful tool and we would not have been able to do that without Sky. So thank you.
Michael has a question.
Yeah, and just her organization and how to send it, when to send it. I don't think we've ever had this much feedback for LCAP, ever.
Michael?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Nia's exceptionalism. Uh, the state of California, as I've said repeatedly, doesn't make it easy for anyone to be a board member on a school board or a school administrators to be school administrators. I don't know if the public appreciates how almost every dollar is contested. It has a certain regulatory or administrative thing linked to it. And the fact that we were able to um basically shine and kind of show to others how to do this, I think really says a lot about the management of our district. And you know, you're, you're just, you're, you're really blossoming in your role and I really, I just want to thank you for all you do for us. And congrats on inspiring of uh the, the county and other districts. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Let's close the public comment on the LCAP. Oh, now we have a public hearing. Oh, it's public hearing day. We have a public hearing now on our preliminary budget. And I believe Suzie will be joining us uh via Zoom. There she is.
Yes, I'm here and good evening, board and Samadi and and the rest of the cabinet members. Um, I'm here to present the preliminary budget for twenty four, twenty five. And um, if you recall in April twenty twenty four, um, just a few, a couple of months ago, uh, when we uh brought to you the Z B B um information detailing um uh the budget uh proposal uh from our um sites and departments, um, that was approved on um April twenty four. And so uh with the direction of the board, we did prepare the uh twenty four, twenty five budget using um those uh, you know, the approved C B B. So this budget, um, as it shows here, it provides the um, it outlines the financial plan for Castro Valley for the, for the twenty four, twenty five. It's a really a comprehensive overview. Um, it's a, the big packet as you, as it's attached to the document, um, the, because that uh, the number, um, you know, hundreds of pages is really the format that the C D E requires us to submit. Um, next page. So this is just a um a budget cycle for our community members who may not be familiar with how um our budget is, is um, it's not, it goes through the board. Um, the first one is the budget adoption, uh, but for tonight is really a public hearing. Adoption is going to be on the twenty sixth and then follows with some changes, adjustments um uh later on during the year. Next slide. District funds, um, I uh felt that is probably good to include the information about what operating funds, capital funds and special funds. So this is um really, um, you know, good information as to what um in the each different bucket of um such as operating funds, what's under the operating funds, which is our general fund. Um, capital funds, that's where you'll see our capital, you know, facilities, bond and interest redemption fund as well as building fund. And the special funds are the, our um adult ed and um our um child nutrition fund. Next slide. Okay, so our twenty four, twenty five budget, um, our total general fund, um, revenue combined unrestricted and restricted uh a total of one hundred forty point seven million dollars. And seventy nine percent of that is, is, is local control funding formula, which is our primary source of revenue. Um, two, uh, two percent is from federal, uh, other state is eighteen and then a local will be one percent. Um, so uh you, the local control funding uh formula, seventy nine percent, eight for eight point five million of that is um designated for supplemental funds. You've heard the LCAP presentation and so um that money is actually uh towards uh to um fund those the goals that have been set for um the three year plan. Next slide. Uh, for just the unrestricted general fund revenue, um, you are seeing here is ninety six percent of the total is local control funding formula. Um, we have other state and local that makes up the four, uh, four percent. Um, next slide. For restricted general fund, um, little different because um we do have um federal funds that are twelve percent. Uh, eighty three percent is still uh state to still uh puts in, um, we get um eighty three percent of restricted funds from the state. Um, and then, um, but the, this, the reason why it's restricted is because it's um, they are for specific purposes. They're not, it's not like an unrestricted, right? We have um for restricted funds, um, as you can see at the bottom, um, it talks that, you know, we will be listed here. Um, uh, federal funds such as title one, title two grants, special ed, um, and also the other um funds such as the um uh, expanded up uh learning opportunity um program and also the costers on behalf payments. Next slide. So this is a um give uh gives you the detail, um, really the breakdown of personnel of eight, eighty four percent is our total general fund expenditures and then other remaining six percent, sixteen percent is non personnel. So as you can see here, I've listed um the non personnel expenditures here. Um, um, starting at, you know, uh, utilities, two point seven million dollars. Uh, you have a textbooks, uh, reference materials there for half a million, uh, some building improvement pass through money that we receive, but that's a belong to us, it belongs to other agencies. And so, um, such as our um, um, R O P program. So that is actually money that is going back to the R O P. Um, and then we have the debt service uh payment of um, um, about four hundred thousand dollars. That makes up the twenty four point two million. Um, and then in the next slide. Because you saw it's six point five million dollars in that previous uh slide, um, I wanted to give more um, more detail on the, where the professional services, uh, how it's budgeted. So um, as you can see here, we have advertising, um, audit fees, all of these um actually fall under the professional services. And so I know that, um, you know, uh, you may be wondering, um, you know, why the, in the previous slide is uh professional services so much higher than the other um, other uh ones that are listed. And this is because um a lot of it is really um, you know, things that we are required to, to, to have. Um, a good example will be, you know, our software information services, one point one million dollars. So this is our financial um software. Um, this is uh our um student data um information. Uh, we also have um our um health services here that um is under um our special ed as well as. our special ed as well as our um SALPA AU um admin unit. And security services, um, is also under professional services. Next slide. Um, so restricted programs, um, like special ed, um, as we've seen here, um, uh, it should be self-sustaining. But as we all, you know, every year we talk about this, um, we don't get enough money from federal or state to fund our special ed program. So um, you have a chart, uh, a chart here um of special ed expenditures of thirty one point one million dollars. Two percent is coming from the federal, eight point nine, uh, twenty eight point five percent from the state. Um, local is uh uh two point four million dollars. The um sixty two point five is coming from the um um general fund. Um, this is a contribution to this program. Um, and so I, this is, you know, uh, this is something that we're always, um, you know, a monitor uh to make sure that um we balance the uh the revenues and expenditures. Um, and um, we have conversations, um, you know, ongoing conversations with the department um to really um take a look at all of the expenditures. And so this is the um, the twenty four, twenty five budget uh coming in at thirty four point one million for special ed. Next slide. Um, this is components of ending fund balance just gives you um the information about what um each of the buckets are. Um, revolving cash restricted, committed and uh economic uncertainties. Um, so in the next slide, you'll see the dollar amount. So um, if we go, yes, so uh unrestricted and restricted um for twenty four, twenty five, our ending fund balance, we're projecting to be eight a nine point four million dollars. Um, we've said, we set aside uh the revolving cash source prepaid expense expenditures legally restricted. This is our, these are your strict, this are our restricted funds, three point one million dollars. And so we end up with a uh reserve for economic uncertainty, so five um million dollars. Um, this is after we set aside the committed funds for supplemental funds um and also medical billing. So um, we are our ending or our um reserve for economic uncertainties is three point three six percent for um at the end of twenty four, twenty five. And then in the next slide. Um, multi-year, a big part of our budget um is really to look at three years. Um, the twenty four, twenty five and uh two out years, twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven. You, um, this is as of May revise, this is the um, um, the best uh information that we have at the time that we prepared this, this um, um, the but the preliminary budget. We know that the uh the governor um is going to uh uh will be approving the state budget. And so once that is approved, we will um make any changes, but that um it will be come, that will be that will come um in in August. Uh, so these are the assumptions that we've used. Um, enrollment is uh is uh really important to to take a look at that and uh where we are and we're a growing district. Um, we have a projected ADA and also the funded ADA, including the unduplicated percentage where we, um, this is the the number um that we that is used to calculate our supplemental funds. We don't, we don't, we're, we're, we don't, we're not at the fifty five percent or higher for us to meet the, to get the concentrated funds, which is the additional funds that other school districts, our our surrounding districts get. Uh, because we're below that, we we only get the supplemental funds and so we are at forty forty two point nine nine percent. Um, our projection is forty uh same as this year, uh, forty two point nine nine. And then next slide. You'll see our multi-year uh projections. So this is um uh the twenty four, twenty five budget and the two out years. Um, so what we have here is uh we um just in the previous slide are uh the cost of living adjustment that the state um uh uh project uh is projecting uh to uh to for the for the out years. We um assume in this budget, so um the point, the one point zero seven percent uh uh cost of living adjustment, uh, this is the state cost of living adjustment. A one point zero seven is assumed here include and then the uh other um uh cost of living adjustment for the out years um uh is also assumed. So um, looking down at at all the way at the bottom, um, that is the three point three six percent that I mentioned earlier. Um, that is the uh projected um uh reserve for economic uncertainties. Um, so really not that that much uh different uh for the out here. So we're looking at uh the second year. Three point zero one percent. And then the third year is three point zero eight percent. And this is the reason, uh, uh, part of it is because um back in um in um last year, last year, there were um the the cola that was projected for twenty four, twenty five was three point nine four percent. And that's what's assumed in our budget for twenty four, twenty five, but may revise. Um, uh, that nu- number now is one point zero seven percent. That's why um you were seeing um a really a small number here when it comes to reserve for economic uncertainties. And then the next slide. Uh, we do have other funds that we look at, not just the general fund. We have um the student activity reserve, uh, special reserve, it's zero. That's because we wait and uh for the um the monies to come in uh for our um student body uh funds. Uh, and so you'll see uh uh funds and the first interim, second interim, but not during budget because we don't make a projection. We actually uh received the funds and record them as we, when we get them. Um, this uh special, special ed pass-through funds, we have the the cafeteria fund. Um, that is uh six million dollars is what we're projecting. And um, and of course, then the the rest of the other funds, all of these uh other funds uh total sixty nine point um a sixty nine million dollars. And then the next slide is the next steps of the, um, as um Ms. Rashiti mentioned earlier. We will bring to bring this um back to you, the LCAP and this um budget uh for adoption at the next meeting. And then um the any changes from the um state enacted budget uh will be presented um in August for the twenty four, twenty five. And then any questions?
Michael, uh, trustee Kuzian.
Uh, thanks for your presentation, Suzie. Um, I think the thing that really frustrates me is it seems like uh we do. We're constantly reassessing what we have and it seems like our budget process is just kind of be kind of backwards. Um, uh, and I I just want to thank you for the the clarity of what you provided here. And I I I will try to stay optimistic that things will change in Sacramento. So, thank you.
It doesn't look like the the governor is going to approve it before the next time we get together. So that's why it's forty five day revise will be probably where we need to see where we end up. So, thank you, Suzie.
Yeah, thank you, Suzie. Okay, um, we have now uh number ten. Oh, close the public con- um, the public hearing. Um, actually, we have nine C here. Uh, we have approved res- resolution seventy two for twenty three, twenty four designating certain general funds as committed fund balance for twenty four, twenty five.
So this is a resolution to um to to follow the gas fee requirement. Uh, any committed funds uh uh must uh be approved by the board. And so this is a resolution that we're bringing uh uh forward. Um, so when we um bring back the uh budget for your approval, um, we know that you've already approved this resolution committing those two funds, uh, which is um supplemental funds and the medical.
I'd like to move approval of resolution seventy two, twenty three, twenty four. One second.
Okay, it's been first and seconded. Any other comment? Okay, trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzian?
Yes.
Yes, and I say yes, so that passes five, zero. Now, number ten, superintendent Amadi, if you'd like to report.
Just have a couple of things since you've been here long. I know all of us have been in graduation and I just want to, I'm always in awe of how awesome our students are, how well behaved they are. And um, I think every graduation went beautifully. Um, we had at just a couple of things. Um, I wanted to share last, was it Monday, last Monday um or Tuesday, the fourth. We actually had a uh presentation and a training for all of our administrators in AI. And we've got um a pretty good plan of moving forward with training for our teachers and our all of us. Um, and then today it was beautiful to see um that uh our educational services had a training for all of our administrators in restorative practices. And uh they were completely engaged. It was a full day training. And I think it's something that when we talk about support and safety of our students, how important it is when we look at our data uh to understand what that means, restorative practices. And then on Saturday, um, I know uh trustee Adams was with me as well. We went to the uh women's club because the League of Women Voters and the Women's Club had worked together to put a panel together on homelessness in the community. And it was absolutely amazing to hear uh the panel members. Um, and that came about when we had our community alliance here with all of the different organizations actually identifying that as something we can work together as a community. So it was really, really well done. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, now we're time for board comments or reports.
I don't have much to report other than I really enjoyed the graduations. They're just, it's just so fun. I love standing there, especially the high school. We're actually like handing out diplomas and the kids feel like, I'm so nervous. You're like, don't be nervous. You're good. You earned it and hand it and they walk. It's just like, that's what all of this is about. And it's um, it's a lot of time on our feet and it's a chaotic week of all those graduations. But man, it is such like a lovely perk of doing this work is that we get to be there for those moments for for our students. So I, um, you know, I I I never want to lose sight of uh the fact that the work that we do here, obviously it can impact our community at large. But at the heart of it, it's getting those kids through school and into being like great adults, you know, around. And um, so that was uh just a really lovely experience and I think that's all I want to say tonight. Thanks.
I only represented the board at the Redwood High graduation. It was so great to see those kids and how happy they were. Um, and I hope everyone has a lovely summer for those who are off.
I have a few things. First, I was at the graduations with most of us, all of us in fact. And uh also at the uh retirement uh ceremony, which was a while back, most of us were at that also. Um, a couple of weeks or a week ago or two weeks, I can't remember now, I got to escort Shannon Thomas, who's the CEO of uh Eden Hospital around our medical clinic of the Tiberio Clinic and that went really well actually. And uh, they are uh Eden and Tiberio are good partners. So this is going to help us in the long run, I'm sure. Uh, I was at the Jenny Lynn Annual uh Memorial uh that they and um actually got to say a few words about the partnership, the longstanding partnership between the district and the foundation, and that was really good. The keynote speaker this year was George Granger, which I'm always happy to see George. Um, also attended the uh custodian recognition lunch that CD San puts on every year. It's a terrific thing they do for us and I think they are great partners of the district. I'm always glad to be there with them. They give out several awards, give out a lot of money to the schools, give out awards to the custodians and then give them all gift cards to Starbucks, I think, or someplace. As well as lunch, a good lunch, actually. Um, and I was at the ROP meeting last week. And ROP is doing really well right now. You know, uh, Blaine was wondering whether uh we would might lose some grant money or something. But in fact, the, they've been extraordinarily successful, far beyond what he thought. And um, that's been a very good year. The other really big thing there is a lot of the, several of the apprenticeship programs have been approved. And that really gives those kids a leg up to getting into pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship programs that are really a big deal. And finally, I'll say I was at summer school this morning at Castro Valley High School with uh acting principal Jennifer Blackman and had a great tour around over there. I think she said they they in the high school, they have about five hundred and fifty kids there. Um, and it seems to be going well. So, uh, Mr. Handy was not there. I take it he was feeling good and uh at any rate, that's all I have. Thank you.
And trustee Kuzian?
Hi, everyone. Um, um, yeah, I just really enjoyed graduation. And as I think about Juneteenth um next week, I I I always look forward. One of the highlights for me uh is when they sing, lift, sing, lift every voice and sing. Um, that just really resonates with me about uh the mission of our district and uh who we are trying to uplift uplift. And that is a district where we are profoundly much more diverse than our older population. This the school community reflects the future of our community. And it just is, gives me so much pride to look out in that field and to meet with all those families and meet with all those graduates. Um, so it's really wonderful to be there with all of you and and celebrate our our Castro Valley High School graduates, our Redwood uh graduates, our um Creekside Promotion Ceremony, our Continuation School, um, sorry, our our adult education, the GE, the the those achieving the GED and also the the Canyon Promotion. Um, and I just, I'm so proud of our district and all the scope and the breadth uh of what we do. Um, I just was looking up, I I was at a baseball game last week here in uh in the DC area. And I looked up and if you, if all of you look at the back of the room, I saw that, I saw the intersex uh inclusive pride flag. And I was, I I thought of us. I thought about of Castro Valley Unified and our culture of welcoming all. And it made me think about all the families who've spoken to me. Um, thanking, thanking the board and thanking the district for courage and supporting all students. And uh, they were actually passing out uh 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 clappies of the flag. And uh, I've I've kind of struck a a friendly relationship with Valentino um Vecchietti. Uh, she actually designed the flag. Uh, we we connected a a year or so ago uh when we were introducing it into the school. So I was very happy that I picked up one for her and I'll be sending it to her uh in the UK. Um, but it just really made me happy and and sort of see a bit of Castro Valley, um, outside of Castro Valley. So uh, I look forward to being back in Castro Valley soon and thank you very much.
Okay, um, I actually had forgotten some of the things I went to, but people reminded me. Thank you. Um, I remember the graduations, of course, always Redwood. It feels like home. I knew still some folks there. Then we had the long day with Creekside Canyon and Adult School. But um, you know, there's like a punctuation at the end, sort of with the adult school because it's so small and so intimate and you get to actually really know the the people who are graduating, the adults who are graduating, and that is always wonderful. And then, of course, Castro Valley High is just, you know, pomp and cir- circumstance. It's big, it's beautiful, there are people you do still know, and it's wonderful handing out those diplomas. Um, I did go with um uh superintendent Amadi to the Women's uh Club for the homelessness. There were two women there who had been homeless and who told their stories and it was quite compelling. Um, and it 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 it's not what people often think. They think it's people, you know, who, you know, that it's always people with drug or alcohol, what problems, but that it just isn't always the case. And then um, the retirement celebration is always good to see and to see people being really happy. And then, of course, the pitch for them to come back six months later. Okay, and uh uh you gave me a good idea about uh it's might be a good idea to go uh visit the summer school program. I hadn't thought of that. Good idea. Okay.
One, kind of, I wanted to say one more thing.
Please.
Michael reminded me of this actually, uh, when you mentioned Redwood there because if you look at today's forum, there's several uh good photographs and stories about both Redwood and the adult school.
Yeah, good.
Sarah showing it right over there. It's very nice. It talks about our two schools that sometimes don't get that much recognition.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, very good. All right, I think um it is time to adjourn.